Okay, at 7 o'clock I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, first order of business, I'm going to do this before we do real call if that's okay, Cheryl. So, first order of business is I'm going to ask for a motion of the council to approve Councilwoman DeYoung's participation in tonight's council meeting via phone.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I post? Okay. Welcome, Mr. DeYoung. So, Cheryl, do you want to do real call?
Yes. Councilmember Brenda Kinser.
Present.
Councilmember Jermaine Carnegie.
Present.
Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilmember Judith Dunleavy.
Present.
Councilmember Carl Leon.
Carla, too.
Councilmember Jared Couch. And Councilmember Paula Kelly.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to excuse Jared. He isn't able to be here tonight.
I make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser to excuse Councilwoman Couch from tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, Carl, can you hear us? Carl?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you, ma'am, ma'am.
All right. Cheryl called your name and you didn't respond, so I was concerned that maybe you couldn't hear us.
Yeah, I didn't hear. I can hear you and Councilwoman Kinser.
Okay. So, everybody be sure to use your mic, please. Thank you.
Everybody can just get as close as you can, then hopefully we're relying on the speakers on the ceiling to reach down to the phone. But we are working on an AV upgrade, and that upgrade will allow the phone system to be tied directly into the AV system. So, hopefully this is a problem with a solution in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. So, I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunleavy, signed by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now, a motion for the consent agenda, items 1 through 7.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda of items 1 through 7. Second.
I actually, sorry.
You have something?
Yeah. Actually, just found a small typo. I totally forgot. I was going to call you earlier, just on page 32. I think it's, let me see if I can find it exactly. I just made that note, but I didn't have it. Okay. So, the paragraph that begins, "Improvements to the park will begin," well, it says "will be" begin.
Oh, yes, it does.
That's it. Sorry. Okay, so I had a motion, I believe, by Councilwoman Kelly, seconded by Councilwoman Dunleavy, with a correction made by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, tonight, we actually have a guest speaker, though he wasn't listed, but there's some great things that are going on down at the park. And so, Bobby, I understand you have some pictures that you want to show us and give an explanation as to what's happening there.
I speak loud enough. There we go.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Castillo. I am a volunteer firefighter with the Cedar Woolley Fire Department. Been on the department for about four years now. This year, at the baseball fields down at Riverfront Park, next to the basketball courts, I was assistant coach, and my son was playing with Officer Gates, Gates' kid, and we noticed the lack of a bench and just the field conditions. So, we decided to take it upon ourselves to come up to the Cedar Woolley Volunteer Fire Association and the Police Department and see if we can get together and build something for the kids. So, if you look at the screen, here's a couple pictures that we made, or benches. So, this was the field that the kids were playing on for the last few years. And I totally get that it's, everybody's extremely busy, it takes, you know, the kids are just glad to be playing. This is the only bench for about two years that was sitting out there at Riverfront Park. Try to go back here. Anyways, with talking to some folks and getting a lot of supplies donated, the association and the Police Department, we got together and made some benches for these kids, and we cemented them into the, into the ground. We tore up where the benches were and a little ways beyond the backstop and put new gravel in there. And you can see what they look like. It took quite a bit of time, but we had a lot of participation, and we just scraped the field for right now to get kids playing. Right now, when it's summertime, and my plan for next year is kind of taking this on as a project and trying to work together with the Police Department and all of us getting together. Next year, I have all the dirt donated from Skagit Aggregates by Troy Hansen. So, we're going to rip out all the existing dirt and replace it with new stuff and just try to keep it maintained. And we put new gravel in on the backside, if you can see, and the benches itself. The rock was donated by Skagit Aggregates. The material was donated by Eene Lumber. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Nathan Selsina for, you know, letting us put some of the wood in his wood shop for the time being, and Leo Jacobs for letting us use, going back and forth between the wood shop and the metal shop to get these things taken care of for these kids. Both of the gentlemen I speak of and Eene Lumber didn't hesitate because they knew it was going for the city and for the kids. That's really all I have.
Well, that's really great. Thank you very much for seeing the need and actually taking it upon yourself, and also to the Fire Department and the Police Department for volunteering time and effort to make this happen. Yeah, my son used to play on that field. It was a much nicer field than it is now.
Yeah, this was my son's last year, and so he was sad that he doesn't get to use them. But it's for the kids that are coming up, and, you know, I think if all the volunteers in the Fire Department, you know, and the Police Department, we always see everybody on their worst days, right? We're not all about flashy lights and sirens. We want to give back to the community as well, so, thank you.
You give to the community in a lot of ways. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And thank you also to Skagit Aggregates, is that if I said that correctly, Troy Hansen and Eene Lumber. Before we move on, I want to recognize the scout troop that is here. They are here acquiring their merit badges. Which troop is this?
4067.
4067. Well, welcome. We're glad to have you here. Okay, moving on. Staff reports. Chief Tucker.
So, not much to report, other than got a couple of people out on medical. Detective Hanawalt got into a scuffle with a suspect, and it's never really cool, it seems like, when you get hurt on duty. He's a year older than me and just stood up wrong or grabbed the guy wrong, and something tweaked in his elbow. So, he's out for a few days with his elbow, something pulled or twisted or torn. I have another officer that's out with some other medical issues that will be out for probably another 10 days, but both expected to recover without any issues. And finally, we did our I-1639 presentations, back-to-back, two of them on Friday night, and had probably another 50 or 60 people in here on Friday in the two groups, and it seemed to go well. So, I think I'm going to do a little brief presentation on some of that at Rotary in August as well, so, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Chief Klinger? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Coleman?
All right, so, we finally got word from the Department of Ecology about their legislative grants for the upcoming updates that are required for the Shoreline Master Program. Our Shoreline Master Program was updated in 2016 and is now required to be updated in 2020. Ecology notified us that they have $16,800 grant available to help with the costs of our update process. So, that's good news. I intend to be applying for that when they get the application period open here shortly, and that'll help defray some of the costs of having a new assistant planner. So, it's welcome news to have this grant. And I think that's it. I've got something on the agenda tonight, so I'll be talking with you again shortly.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Mr. Feigberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. We have advertised for the sidewalk and ADA ramp upgrade project. Bids close on August the 1st. With your motion at the last meeting, we'll be awarding that, assuming good bids shortly, and then bringing that to you for your information at the following council meeting. David's also getting close to advertising for the Robinson Board-Sass sewer project, which is an extension of the work we did on West Nelson and Bennett and Beatty last year. And tip grants are due on August the 16th. I'll have a memo for you at the next council meeting. We expect to submit applications for two projects, for the SR-20 lane widening project. We applied for that last year and had a well-ranked project, but were not awarded because of our success the previous year. But we'll try to get on that project to support the work to build the crossing for the Behavioral Health Center by Life Care and the lane widening between Holt Camp and Hodgins Road. And the other one is Jamison Overlay. It's the top overlay project in the tip that you just passed at the last council meeting. This one will go from the tennis courts to Fifth Avenue, might carry out a couple more blocks. The way that grant is awarded and structured, we can put in segments, and they'll award as much money as they see fit on those. So, we're looking at probably a $400,000 or $500,000 project for overlay on Jamison. And finally, I understand that on the 17th, the Council of Governments moved to award our grant application for the John Lainer Road Bike and Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements Project. That's a part of our Jones-John Lainer Trail Corridor, the one that I had mentioned to you before, will allow us to get a path in place ahead of a potential undercrossing at the Burlington Northern Crossing part of that project. They're proposing that the engineering could happen in 2020, next year, but the construction funds are not available until 2024. So, we're debating about whether we want to have that large of a gap between the two. We ran into a bit of a hiccup with doing that on some projects last year, just because the Department of Transportation expects us to move these things right along. So, debating about whether we want to push it that quickly or not. Make that decision tomorrow, discussing that with Aaron and the mayor. There is a chance that the construction funds can be accelerated, so it might be worth going ahead with that, and we'll talk about that tomorrow. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Berg.
I've got nothing specific to report tonight.
All right. Mr. Merriman.
I just have one item. At each of your places, I have a site from our Cedar Woolley Municipal Code about financial disclosure. And one of the things that the Finance Department is required to do is keep on file certain information from each of you on different things that you have filed with the state. So, just to update our files, we'll be giving you a call to let you know which items we need to make sure that we're in compliance with that part of our code. But I just wanted to give you a heads-up in advance. The part of the code is somewhat generic on what it says we need to keep on file, so we'll try to get that a little more specific, so you know exactly what we'll need. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Owen.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Carnegie?
I'm just, I'm not sure who does this, but at the wastewater treatment plant, I guess there's some blackberries that are growing over into the residential areas. I just talked to a resident, I guess, a few days ago, that said there's some blackberries coming over in there from where the waste, at the end of Marshall Avenue, that area, Jennings.
Yes, I was just out there walking that site a couple of days ago, and we've mowed most of those blackberries already. So, when did you talk to them about that?
When I say it was, maybe it was Saturday.
Okay.
Saturday afternoon.
It's mostly been cleaned up, but I'll talk to Nathan about it.
All right. That's all I have. Oh, and the construction on the library starts on the 5th of August, right? It's going to be before.
I think the mobilization's on the 12th, and the pre-con meetings begin on the 1st.
Thanks. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman DeYoung.
Hello?
Yes. Do you have anything to report?
Oh, thank you. Didn't want to report the Red Brick Concert on Sunday down at the Riverfront Park. It was well-attended, and lots of happy families and lots of kids with face paint. It was a joyous occasion. And also had a question about graffiti, about who's responsible for removing graffiti, and how, what's the duration that property owners have to remove that, since we've had two tagmas on State Street there.
If we have somebody that's willing to do it as soon as they can.
If someone can back into the phone, that'd be great.
Okay. But Melissa, I think, already got that taken care of.
Sounds like it's already been taken care of, Carl.
Okay, I saw it on the fence this morning, so it's being resolved with the property owner?
What we do is, if we don't have a property owner that goes right out and does it, then our offender work program crew goes out and does it as soon as they can.
So, did you hear that, Mr. DeYoung?
I did not. Sorry.
So, it is the offender program that takes care of that, and Melissa runs that, and they'll check into that.
Oh, excellent. So, that's scheduled. Thank you so much.
Yep.
And that has been my report.
All right. Thank you.
Along that line, I would mention, just because it's very obvious, there was a tagging on the BNSF overcrossing recently, and actually Laura brought that to my attention. I have a contact into Burlington Northern to deal with that. We can't just go up and paint on their bridge. They strongly discourage that, but we have notified them of that.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
I had a, I was going to say, I thought, isn't there a countywide graffiti abatement organization? Normally, when I call in, that's where they put me over to.
We've always had Melissa's crew do it. We have minions for that kind of stuff.
All right. Councilwoman Kinser?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Dunleavy?
Carl and I did have some correspondence with someone who was concerned with the speed on Westview, and was looking for something that we just don't do on, you know, streets, speed bumps. So, I think the only thing is actually to put an accent on trail road, because that's where they're beginning their speeding, turning onto Westview.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kelly?
Yes, all I have is that we do have a grand opening out at Double Barrel Barbecue on Friday, the 2nd of August, and Julia and I are planning to be there, as we hope many of you may participate. It is a mid-afternoon event, because the mayor does have another engagement later on that day, so.
So, at 2:00. 2:00.
So, please come out and join us.
All right.
I have nothing else to do.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to mention, as did Councilman DeYoung, that the concert was really great. We have three more coming up, one on the 28th, and then I think it's on the 4th, and the following, or maybe it's the 5th, and then the following Sunday after that. But they're a lot of fun, and we encourage everybody to participate in that. Okay, moving on then to public comment. It is now 7:20, and I will open up the floor for public comment. Hello there. We just ask everybody gives their name and address, and try to keep to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Wood Nancy. Our address is 702 Suite A, Metcalf Street. I own BYK Construction with my brother Paul, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the Urban Village Code that's getting voted on today. We support the code. In fact, we have a piece of property that's under contract that's contingent on the code being approved. As investors and developers in Cedar Grove, as well as owning some buildings downtown, I think it's critical to get more people in Cedar Woolley in all kinds of housing to be spending money in our local businesses. We have some tenants that are doing great and some tenants that are struggling. And the more people in Cedar Woolley, the better the businesses are going to do. We believe in a variety of housing. Obviously, we build single-family homes. We build apartments. In whole, Scott County needs all types of housing, and this is a way that we can get more housing in Cedar Woolley. Obviously, we're heavily invested in Cedar Woolley, and a big reason for that is the planning department, the council, the mayor, your guys' willingness to hear our voice and your vision, and just the really kind of how can we make the community better type of approach. So, we really appreciate that, and we want to continue to do successful projects in the city of Cedar Grove. And that's it. Thanks for your time, and we are hoping to open the grocery store on Monday.
Oh, really? Yay! Wow! Thank you, Tim. Okay, it is 7:23, and I will close public hearing. We will now move on to unfinished business. Speaking of Urban Village, we have John talking about the Urban Village Mixed Use Overlay Development Regulations.
Thank you. So, this is a second read on the Urban Village Mixed Use Overlay. I think I gave a fairly comprehensive description of the project at the last council meeting. I'm happy to elaborate further, but I don't want to necessarily bore the council with rehashing that. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes?
I am completely in favor of the Urban Village concept. I feel like we really need to continue to be diverse as we go into the future. A couple of concerns I have, though, is parking. I'm kind of concerned about the parking matter, if we're only providing one space per bedroom for two bedrooms or less. Is a one-bedroom a typical design scenario in this type of thing? If we had a couple in a one-bedroom residence, that's going to be a bit of a problem. It's just, I'm just a little concerned by that.
So, it's, so a studio is required to have 1.2 parking spaces per unit. A one-bedroom is 1.5 spaces per unit, and a two-bedroom is 1.7 per dwelling unit. And then one space per bedroom up to two bedrooms, and then another half a space for additional bedrooms over two bedrooms. So, it's more than, it's more than one, but less than two parking spaces per residential unit. And then the commercial is required to have its own separate parking that doesn't overlap with this. These parking standards were based on what we've seen actually used in some of the local, like, doing a count. Actually, BYK helped and gave a count of how many parking spots were actually used in their Downtown 48, based on the number of bedroom units that they have. We also compared to other jurisdictions, and I don't recall exactly how close we were. We're about the same as multifamily in Burlington, is my recollection. I can look that up. I have that right here. And then definitely higher than, say, Bellingham, where they give steeper cuts for, you know, reduced parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question off of Brenda's question? Is, do those other examples, do they have extra storage for things like, I don't know, extra vehicles or maybe utility vehicles or, what do you call it, four-wheelers and things like that? I mean, motorcycles and, like, extra little.
Toys. Multi-family are run different than single-family residential.
So, when you live in a multi-family, you don't get your toys. You are assigned a certain number of parking spots typically, and there's visitor parking, but you don't, you don't get to just park, you know, four cars there. If you need four cars, you need to live in a single-family home or someplace where then it can accommodate it. It's not how it works in most, most multi-family. Now, that's going to depend on the owner, obviously, make, owner of the project, making sure that people aren't over-parking cars. And nobody wants a parking problem in, this is probably a question for somebody who owns a multifamily, how they deal with these sorts of things. These are the things that was discussed at the Planning Commission level, though. The idea is that it's, you know, smaller units use fewer, use fewer cars, and that's what we've seen borne out at Downtown 48. If you have a studio, it's usually one person, maybe two. That's why there's, you know, 1.2 cars required, because some of them are going to have two people living in them, some people, most of them are going to be just one person. And then a two-bedroom is similar, you know, 1.5 for, or 1.7 for a two-bedroom, so that's assuming at least two different people living there. More so in a multifamily where there's going to be nearby to transit and nearby to other commercial uses, the idea is that there's fewer car trips necessary, and people are less car-dependent when they're in proximity to transit, and the SCAT bus will go right by on Highway 20. And I can't speak for SCAT, but what would be presumed is if a project such as this is built and there's, you know, 100 units along Stendal Street, they will move their bus route over to accommodate those uses. So, it is lower parking than we require for single-family housing, but there are several factors why there is, why is it reduced parking. And if there's, and if they do need for, to store their toys, that's where the mini-storage next door comes into play. mini-storage Next Door comes into play.
I was wondering about that.
Okay, any more discussion?
Mayor, if I might, one of the questions that has come up to me, and I think we are well-addressed in it, but I thought perhaps just as for public edification, it might be good to address, is how this would impact downtown. And I think that Tim, you know, does a good job of just saying how they're committed to downtown on the one hand, but also on growth, you know, as a matter, of course, too. And I think that's really important, because some people seem to feel that we're going to take something away from our downtown area if we approve this. And I just feel like there is room for growth up on Highway 9, there's room for growth east of town, there's room for growth west of town. We can do these things without harming our basic downtown core.
I would agree with you, and I think the downtown core will hold something unique and something different than what these other urban villages will offer.
We have the library coming, and we have the market coming, and it's got its own draw.
Right. Yeah. Any other comments regarding that? Okay. So, if not, I'm looking possibly for a motion for ordinance 193119. This would be Attachment A to adopt amendments to Title 17 of the Seadruck Wully Municipal Code and the Seadruck Wully Design Standards and Guidelines to Establish Regulations for the Urban Village Mixed Use Overlay.
So, I move, we make the, a motion to approve this Urban Village Multiple Use Program, and I see that there are ordinance numbers to be filled in there?
Yes, it's 193119. I just read it off.
3119, and then there's two others?
Yeah, but we do them individually.
Okay.
So, let's, okay. All right, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. One opposed, Councilman DeYoung. Is that correct, Councilman DeYoung? Is that correct, Councilman DeYoung? You opposed?
I stand opposed, thank you.
Okay. You said opposed, correct?
Opposed, correct.
All right, thank you. Okay. And then a motion for the Attachment B ordinance, 193219, to adopt the new UVMU overlays, subarea plan into the land use element and the comprehensive plan.
I move that we accept ordinance 1932-TAC19 to adopt the UVM overlay subarea plan and the land use element of the comprehensive plan.
Isn't that 20? Is that 20?
193219. Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunley, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser, to approve ordinance 193219. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So, we have 5/4, one opposed by Councilman DeYoung. And then the last, Attachment C ordinance, 193319, to adopt a new, let's see, amendments to the Seadruck Wully zoning map.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1933-19, amendments to the Seadruck Wully zoning map.
Second.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So, five standing for ordinance 1933, and one opposed, Councilman DeYoung. All right.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for all of their work on this. Like, 17 meetings, right? I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work.
Yes, thank you. All right. Then moving on to new business, the Unoccupied Aerial Vehicle Policy.
Let me talk to her tonight.
Okay.
Oh.
So, for those of you who don't know, this is Tucker Link, and he has been interning here at Seadruck Wully this month. He's done a great job, and this is actually a policy that he has put together for the city of Seadruck Wully. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm Tucker Link. I'm a native of state of Washington, and a student at Indiana University studying government policy. The policy before you guys was developed in the city of Bloomington, Indiana. The city of Bloomington is about 45,000 people with 40,000 students. May I be booked here?
Can you give me that away?
Should you give it now?
No.
Oh.
I'll try my best to forget. So.
Is it on?
Bloomington, 45,000 people, 40,000 students, considerably larger town. They looked at Paul, and Cisco, and Portland, Maine, and everywhere in between. There was a committee of attorneys, police chiefs, fire chiefs, students, mayors, where the mayor put together, and they developed a policy that met everyone's expectations of privacy. The policy before you is simplified for a smaller city that does not have as many different departments. You don't have a legal team at your disposal. I believe it to be a good policy. Aaron's looked over it, and I believe also thinks it'd be a good policy. It stipulates what departments can use a UAV or a drone. They have a wide variety of uses. Legal or law enforcement has a lot of opportunities for them. Law enforcement would have more hurdles in front of them as far as getting a warrant. That's stipulated in the policy. If you have any questions, I can try my best to answer them. But to my belief, it is a straightforward way to implement a policy that sets guidelines for how a city official should use a drone, what the UAVs can be used for, and it requires people to have compliance with the federal FAA, their Part 107 license, and they sign it showing that they've read it, they have the licenses to prevent any invasion of privacy or malpractice on behalf of the city.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
My, my only question was, I was wondering if there were, I don't know, any cities close by us, any cities close by us, or like, maybe closer to our size. I'm just curious if other cities here.
I tried scanning around Washington, trying to find an active policy. Holman, Washington has one that's been very, very recently implemented, and I read through it, and it looked very similar to what I've seen before. They're actually, their police department was who pushed for it. They wanted greater UAV use on behalf of their law enforcement to monitor crime scenes and accidents and such, and so that their law enforcement pushed it through, but it's a very similar policy to what you have in front of you.
Thank you.
Both the Scotty County Sheriff's Office and the Swenomish Police Department operate UAVs currently, and both, Swenomish has been over here too, right?
Yes.
Both, both come out under mutual aid to support the Seadruck Wully Police even now.
Wow.
Okay. Any other questions? So, this, this is a first read, and we don't have to move forward with this tonight, or you can. What is the council's pleasure?
Just wait, I guess.
Okay. Hearing nothing, we will wait. So, Tucker, I want to thank you. I know that you've been working hard on this, and I've been watching you, you've just been sitting at the desk looking up this information. Thank you very much for putting this together for the city of Seadruck Wully.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Your mic.
Carl.
Yes. Is it appropriate to move this on the first reading?
Yes, it is. I did call for that, but nobody, are you wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, it'd be great. I'd like to move that we approve the Unoccupied Aerial Vehicle Policy.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Dunley, for the Unoccupied Aerial Vehicle Policy. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need to show hands. For all in favor?
Not one.
Okay. All right. So, all right, so all are in favor. Opposed? None opposed. Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And that is it. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, without objection, we are adjourned.